All right, I can see ya.
I'm Darren.
So we'll call, I'll call them waiting to order. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to, if you examine the resolution under consent agenda for employment in park and rec, Sierra Vogt is the only individual there we'll be voting on tonight. The other individuals were not added until late on the agenda, we'll have to pull them up in our next meeting.
Okay, great. And the airport agenda item will be tabled also until next meeting. So our first order of business is to, where Jessica in?
She's going to take it.
I, who has taken your name.
I, Jessica Lyndes-Keenan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties of council member.
Discharge, discharge all duties of council.
In the city of Fairfield.
In the city of Fairfield.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
And legends. (applause).
I didn't know what was gonna happen, but.
All righty. Joel, you please call the roll.
Rasmussen.
Present.
Revolinski.
Yes.
Boyer.
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin.
Yes.
Hammers.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Okay, on our consent agenda, we have approval of the minutes of the October 28, 2013 meeting, resolution of employment at the Park and Recreation Department for Sierra Vogt. I believe she is a lifeguard. Approval of liquor and beer license for Hy-Vee C store, and approval of claims in the amount of $557,557.63. I bet you can't do that again. So I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Your Honor, I think it's $577,577.63.
Isn't that what I said?
Fifty-seven, I think.
Oh, okay.
That's good.
Okay, that's what I meant. There were too many fives in seven, sorry. Five seventy-seven, five seventy-seven, point six-three. Okay, it is moved by Revolinski.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that was opposed, same sign. Consent agenda approved. Okay, public appearances, I don't believe we have any. We'll go to resolution, action items and ordinances. We need to set December 16 as our regular council meeting in December. We usually only have just one during December, not two. So I've taken a motion to.
So move.
Thank you. Moved by Hallie.
Second.
Second by Tony. I'm not used to saying last names. All those in, any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passed. Next action item is accepting the water main improvements, South 7th Street, West Jefferson Avenue, and East Hempstead. Melanie, are you here somewhere? Yeah, you wanna address that, just tell us a little bit?
The attached letter to the agenda outlines the project. Carl, Kevin, and I, as well as a representative from Cornerstone, walked through the project. Anything that we found on the punch list item was taken care of the next day, and I guess I'll confirm with Carl that they were all taken care of. Wonderful. You have already done the final payment, so the only payment left is the retainage, which is the 5% that is held. The retainage is for $4,389.17. Upon accepting that retainage payment, you also accept the project as final and begin the two-year warranty period.
Great, thanks. Any questions from council members, from Melanie? Motion to accept these projects?
I move for approval.
Okay, it's moved by Rasmussen.
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin.
Yes.
Revolinski.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Boyer.
Yes.
Hammers.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. Okay, well now we have approving a tax abatement application for 2310 Lake Trail. This is new construction, I believe, for Jasper La Russa. Is, are they here?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, great. Any questions here, council members? For the builder, owner? If not, I'll take a motion to approve.
So move.
Moved by Hallie.
Second.
Second by Hammers. Any discussion? If not, I guess, please call the roll.
Hallie.
Yes.
Hammers.
Yes.
Revolinski.
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Boyer.
Yes.
Okay, the next item for the airport has been tabled till next time. The deer ordinance will be our next item. And just, do you wanna talk about the, what was added?
Yeah, okay, just pull that up. Okay. Let's see, okay, so I think the item that we were gonna propose to council that we add was suggested by Connie, that, I can't, I'm trying to find the exact language here.
You probably have it in front of you on paper.
So basically, that we make as a part of the ordinance, that we cover deer while transporting them within the city limits.
So that's your number five here on paper?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I see. So we had quite a discussion in the, I mean, I don't know if you really wanna go into that now, or later, when I do the minutes, but we had discussion about it and.
Go ahead.
Pros and cons in the meeting, and this was kind of one of the, I guess, really the only item that came out of it, that we really wanted to change at this point. We were all still in favor of proceeding.
Okay.
One thing, though, is that this is only enforceable for the people that are doing this deer hunt, the select individuals that are doing the deer hunt.
This isn't for, if Tony would go out and hunt, he's not gonna be required, if he went
out in the county and hunted, to cover his deer if he brought it into town. It's only, only applies to those people that are doing this hunt.
Okay, thank you. So I guess at this time, we'll open the public hearing, and I guess last time, we had those supporting this ordinance go first, is that correct?
Right.
So this time, we're gonna flip it around, and so I'll open the public hearing, so anyone opposed can speak. And what I ask that is you keep your comments to two or three minutes, and if you've heard someone already say that particular point, not necessary to repeat it, and also to, I request that people don't talk back and forth within the audience, 'cause that just makes it more challenging, and to be addressing the council only. So anyone opposed to this ordinance, I invite you to come, state your name and your address here in Fairfield. Okay, seeing no one, those in support of the ordinance?
My name's John Ferguson, I'm at 57 Wilson Boulevard, and I think this issue boils down to a matter of public safety, not deer safety. I want to, I want everybody to know, I love deer, I think they're beautiful creatures, but when it comes to public safety, the city has an obligation to make sure that its people in town are safe. I live in between two streets, one is on the way to hospital, and the other is in, on the way to two schools. And I have at least, I've seen eight to 10 deer in my backyard, and it's not a, ever so often, it is regular. They come down my driveway, they cross my street, they go across the main streets. It is, it is a safety issue, and it really needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I would just like to address a few things that came up at the last council meeting, some of the concerns. One person had suggested that Keokuk had canceled their hunt because of safety and liability concerns, and I didn't think that was right, but I did call, I thought maybe there'd been a change since this book was printed, in this book, they are listed, but I did call Keokuk, and they are continuing with the hunt, they have no problems, they are fully in, you know, support of it, and saying that, you know, they're very happy with the way the hunt is going. So I wanted to just kind of clarify that, and be sure that, I wanted to be sure I wasn't wrong on that issue. As far as the people concerned about them dying in their backyard, or deer running around with arrows sticking out of them, I've called several cities, and talked to the police department, and asked them specifically, have you had any complaints, or people calling in complaining about deer dying in the backyard, or running around with arrows? I did not find a single place that anybody had had these kind of concerns in the city. It seems to be pretty much a non-issue. As far as those people that feel like these proficiency tests are not, don't really fill the bill, or whatever, because they're a stationary target when they're shooting, and this, they think that people are gonna be shooting at the deer when they're running. I don't know whether there's any deer hunters here tonight, but I think most deer hunters are very patient, they wait in their stand until they can get a perfect shot, they do not shoot at just anything that comes running by. They don't wanna wound the deer, they wanna bring them down very quickly with a very good shot, and you don't get a good shot when the deer is running. So then, there's been a lot of discussion about what worked, or didn't work in California, and I thought maybe it would be better to find out what was working than, that was in the past, maybe what was working today. So I called and talked to California Fish and Game, I talked to a lady by the name of Mary Sommer, she's an environmental scientist in their big game division, and I asked her if they had any problems with deer in California, and if so what, they were doing about it. She said they are having a huge problem, and that was her exact words. She said that none of the alternative things that they try are working, but they have not done any hunts to bring the population down. She told about a very upscale, large community, gated community, that was fenced, unfortunately, when they fenced, that they fenced in a bunch of deer. Now the deer are in there, they think they have over 100 and some, and none of the alternative measures are working, and so what they're doing is, they are catching these female deer, and doing hysterectomies and tubal ligations. Believe me, I did not make that up, I have contact information if you would like to talk to her. And then still, that's not solving the problem, because it's not addressing the problem of overpopulation. So she said they're still upset, but, you know, they still have a problem. Today, on Iowa Public Radio, there was a program talking about how the deer population is just exploding in the United States, and how more and more cities are having to go to an urban bow hunt, because there's no other alternative. And they quoted the National Wildlife Federation as saying that there is no other solution other than to bring down the population with some kind of a hunt. I also talked, spoke with Matt Stutzman, unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight, he is in Mexico at the moment, but he said he's fully in favor of this hunt, he saw no problem with it, it could, as long as we had experienced bow hunters, he would be fully in favor of it, and he would love to be, participate in the hunt if it goes forward, he would like to be one of the hunters, so. And we barely touched on a couple of other things that really are a concern, like the higher incidence of Lyme disease, and also the damage that the deer do to the environment. And I'm not really going to go into that, but I think Michael mentioned the environmental thing, how they are damaging the environment, eating new seedlings and everything with overgrazing. So in closing, I would just like to say, this is Iowa, we have been doing this, urban bow hunts, the first urban bow hunt here in Iowa was 1994, and they've been more hunts all the time as, as the problem gets worse. And I just think that none of these towns would be considering continuing their hunts if there were any of these problems that we keep being told that we will have. I think we need to trust our, the experts that have told us, the environmental scientists, the National Wildlife Federation, the experts at DNR, all say that there is no other alternative with, to this problem, but to have an urban bow hunt. And I, I think we'd be really foolish to, to ignore their advice. Thank you.
Thank you, Levon. Is there anyone else?
Yes, my name's John Roloff, I live at 101 Wilson Boulevard. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you upon this topic. Mr. Ferguson's my next-door neighbor, so certainly, everything that he has said, I certainly agree with. In addition to the public safety concerns, I think there are also lots of concerns about property damage to vehicles from collisions with deer, there are lots of them all over town, and also property damage to landscape plantings, as was also mentioned. I must confess that I don't know all the details of the proposed regulations, my understanding is that those that wish to take part would need to be certified, qualified in some manner, and I think that it could certainly be done very safely, and I think it's a very good alternative, one of the few alternatives we have, to try to control the population. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open it up discussion to the council. I guess I'd just like to mention also, in the safety meeting when we met this last week, one thing that we did discuss, along with alternative measures, is education for the community, and Nikki Weaver, who has lots of ideas of alternative types of things, at least to help in your own backyards, things that you can do, she's gonna put a list together of those things, so that can, that can help individuals with their gardens potentially, and we will try to get that out to the public through various means, through the paper, radio, probably through Fairfield Media, and probably the water bill, again, just for education purposes and to be helpful. We, I think we recognize that even this deer hunt, you know, is not gonna solve the problem overnight, this is a trial, and we're still gonna have ongoing issues, so we hope that through all these avenues that we can improve the situation. So, council?
I'll say a word on this, if I may, I missed our last meeting, sorry, I wouldn't, I couldn't be here. I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. When it was first brought up last year, I think, it was, there were so many red flags that it raised, and I have to admit, these red flags have been addressed, really. I mean, you know, the, the, the location, the timing, the who's gonna do it, even to the point of, you know, covering up the deer after you kill them, you know, I think there's so much good thinking and good work has gone into this, so I appreciate that. And Levon, you had wonderful points, and you did really good research, thank you, I know you contacted me, you said, you know, how could you oppose this, it's not even in your ward, you know, why don't you just let it happen? You know, everybody votes for everything within the city limits, and so I do get a chance to have a vote, I don't think it's gonna get defeated by my no vote, but I am gonna vote no, and I'll tell you why. I'm pro-life. That's all I can say. I just don't, I just don't like the idea of killing deer 'cause they're a nuisance. To tell you the truth, I ruined my car two weeks ago by having a deer run right in front of it outside the city limits. You know, the, the main thing I thought about that day was not the poor deer. However, it wasn't intentional, and to, my, that's just my personal philosophy, is that I'd rather live and let live, and if it once in a while dies an offender, well, that's the way it goes, but that's, and I can see people, many people don't agree with that, but I think some do, and so I'm voting no. That's all I have to say, thanks.
Thanks, John.
Well, I have to say that, you know, at one point, John and I did discuss the fact that when the ordinance came up regarding feeding deer, John and I both voted against the idea, because I felt that was something that, how are we going to enforce? I mean, how are you going to enforce someone who's feeding deer? They may be feeding the squirrels, and the deer come in and eat the corn, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But I truly feel that the time has come, and I think we need to move forward with the idea that this is, you know, we're going to attempt this, and hopefully, it will be successful, and I think we can learn from this, you know, initial opportunity of the bow hunt. And so I definitely feel that the time has come, that we need to do, we need to address the problem in some way. This may not be the answer, but at least we're attempting to solve a bit of a problem.
Thank you. On this side?
I had, one of my constituents, who couldn't make it tonight, just wanted me to address, or to bring up something that she was concerned about. She still feels that the area in Obie Nelson Park, or adjacent to Obie Nelson Park, is potentially too much traveled by children or, or people to be used in this four-day trial. I told her I didn't agree, I felt like the police department did their research and made sure these locations were well scouted, but Chief, do you have anything to say about that location?
One, I think it's one of the higher deer populated areas, I talked to Ray Griffin, from the outdoor pool where you pay for it, he'd be directly north, he had 13 deer two weeks ago in his front yard. I did look at the last two months, go through, and any accidents reported to us, Highway 1, right in that area, is where we've had an accident reported. The other three big areas were RPM, Walmart, out to the 210 exit, and then up Brookville Road. The second highest area was Highway 1, just north of MUM, by Reef Green and Feed to 155th, which is an area we go on quite a bit for the police department, because that's where, how we get to the airport. The second biggest area was by Evergreen Cemetery, around the corner to the bike trail loop, was the third highest, and then Highway 1 was the fourth highest area. So I think that that area needs to be hunted. I think we've made a lot of concessions in limiting a whole lot, the areas that we've proposed to hunt, and kind of hindered ourselves, we've only, it's only a four-day hunt, not the whole entire deer season. So I think that that's, we need to get as many deer, and have a good showing as possible, and go from there, and get the data from there.
Chief, how is that going to, 'cause it is a small area, so the hunters that, are they, they're gonna be chosen?
They're gonna be cho, they're, they'll be chosen.
And so they will be communicating with each other about who's in that area at such and such time?
That particular area.
How's that gonna be controlled?
Those two areas, Collins proposing, put in two hunters, they'll know exactly where the other hunter is.
Okay.
They'll be shooting, basically in, not out toward the park, they'll be shooting into the woods, and probably at opposite corners of each other.
Okay.
And shooting.
And is there any plan to tape that off, or anything during that period?
We can post signs that says the park's closed, we can pull the gate across, right at Second Street, going in, the arms, close that off. The walking trail that goes by Myrna Gilpins, along that route, the road that goes back to the tennis courts and things like that, we can put up a sign across there that says this is a hunting from sunup to sundown. The hunters know that there's gonna be the possibility, because there's private property adjacent to this hunting area, that they're gonna have to be extra careful. They know that when people hunt normally with guns, there's usually a group of hunters that are pushing the deer to the hunters, so that anybody that hunts is very much aware that there's a possibility of people potentially being in those areas.
And.
And they're not just shooting at a moving target, they're gonna identify it as a deer.
And have we contacted those neighbors that have adjacent properties?
We've contacted 155 people immediately surrounding these areas, 144 of them were for.
Okay.
Or, 145, whatever the math is, 144 were for the hunt, and 12 are against, so they know the days. We'll remind them again, when those deer hunts are gonna be.
And I reminded this, this person that, in the history of all, since 1994, since these hunts have occurred in Iowa, no one's been, no person has been injured by an arrow, no reported accidents, so like Julie said, the hunters aren't shooting at whatever moves.
They're shooting at a deer.
Shooting at a deer.
And the only injuries that have happened are people falling out of the deer stands. And that was two, two hunters, I think, was some of the data that you had?
Yep, two.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, so what's your pleasure? I'll take a motion to approve, or not approve.
I will move that we approve the ordinance as revised.
From the second to third reading?
From the second to the third, sorry, yes.
So it's been moved by Ledger Kaelin.
Second.
And second by Hallie, to approve this ordinance as amended, which says that the deer in town during these dates should be covered, or shall be covered, while being No additional discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Ledger Kaelin.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Hammers.
Yes.
Revolinski.
No.
Boyer.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for, to the public for comments and research, we really appreciate it. Okay, next is ordinance amendment regarding occupancy metering and cutoff. Kevin, you wanna go through that? 'Cause I assume Darren normally would, but he's not here.
Yes, Your Honor, basically, what you see here before you is changed to 1404-110. This is the ordinance that required an individual line to each building. Now, if you were gonna talk about, you know, commercial projects, apartment complexes and the like, we all know when you come up behind those, you always see that grid of metering and cutoff in the back of that. Most people are gonna do that, obviously, because people who rent those occupancies to pay their own bills, generally, it's not included in the rent, you know, they pay their own utility bills and the like. So what we're discovering out there, though, is that some of these are legal, some of these aren't legal, the ones we're finding, these are duplexes and triplexes, in many cases, folks have decided to change a home into a duplex or triplex, this is, these, many of these have permits, a lot of them don't. But what we're discovering in the process is that you, in all these homes, you've got that single line going in. Now, if there's two to three people living in these occupancies, these structures, and one doesn't pay his bill and the other two do, you'll have a hard time cutting that water line off, you can't legally do that, because those other two are paying their bills, it's only on one water line. And I think the spirit of this ordinance is written at a time when you probably didn't see as much multi-occupancy as you are seeing today. So what this does is basically say for each occupancy, so if there's a triplex there, there's gonna have to be three water lines and three cutoffs, three meters to those three occupancies, so that each one stands alone in and of itself, able to be cut off if there are problems with bill servicing otherwise, and also able for our water folks to attend to any issues they may have there, maybe somebody wants a yard meter, someone doesn't, shared areas of the yard, there can be several different kinds of issues. But basically, this allows us to set a meter and a cutoff on every single water line within our corporate boundaries. Making us more thorough.
This is the first reading of this? You didn't talk about that?
It is, indeed, I would request a waiving of the readings.
Oh, definitely not.
Really?
I hope no one moves for that. I feel like this is a little bit controversial, because, now, I, if I may, may I speak? Mayor pro temp. I will.
You should. You should.
You know, it's.
You know, it's, you know, it makes sense, what you said. All those points make sense. But, I mean, ultimately, you know, if someone, someone has a, a single-family dwelling and they've converted it into a duplex, and there may be many, many of these in town, to suddenly separate the water lines, to have to dig up and put in a new water line coming in, I mean, this is a huge expense. We're talking about five to $10,000 for a, for a, for a house. We're saying, we're just, we're just legislating this that, that 200 houses in town have to spend $10,000 because we don't like the way that they pay their water bill?
Not, not exactly. Good point. One that deserves clarification. You know, this is new construction. When we come into new construction.
Oh, it's new construction only.
Yes and no. It's new construction and it's a significant change to structure. Anytime something's going to happen there, where we're doing construction, we're going to seek to get this done. If we find an occupancy that's been illegally turned into a duplex, not only is that going to be the issue, the water line will be the least of the problems because you're not allowed to be a duplex under city code. So for lots of, for lots of folks that, at least the two or three original ones here, and I'm, if I'm imagining percentages, there's an incredible amount of these folks aren't even, you know, they're, they're not legitimate, they weren't permitted, they weren't allowed to become duplexes, they're what you would call an illegal duplex. Not like we're going to go out to the cops, but.
Let's say they're legal duplexes and our police chief's been inspecting them and they have rental permits and all that. But they have.
Fire chief?
I'm sorry.
I don't know what section says.
I'm putting you out there too. Come on.
I looked over here.
We're all going to.
You wish you may.
We got you, we got you.
Sorry. You know, and so I'm not talking about, you know, identifying illegal occupancies. That's a different topic. Here we're talking about service lines to an occupancy. Because it doesn't say anything here about for new construction. It just says, if you have an occupancy, you have to have a separate service line.
It does. And in many cases, though, you're going to have a deal where the service line, you're not going to have to dig up the whole service line. You're going to, there's going to be a point in here.
Oh, well, it's going to cost, you know, eight thousand instead of 10. I mean, you know, the thing is, you may have to reroute the plumbing. In other words, you know, you may have to tear out walls in order to reroute your plumbing inside your house.
Well, we certainly want to work with people on it, but I don't feel like that for the most, most of these, I don't feel like it's going to be a huge onerous or undoable burden for the renter, the owners that rent these homes to make these changes. I mean, you've got to look at the flip side of it and say, okay, we don't do anything and we let these things continue.
Well, I, I think it's fine to say, you know, anyone changing from now on or anyone for new construction, you have to have a separate for each occupancy. But I think it should be defined, as you first said, oh, well, this is only for new construction or new changeovers.
But what do we do when we have a situation where someone's not paying their bill and we can't cut them off? And that costs $200 a month?
How many, how many are like that? I mean, I.
We had several. We, we had complaints. We had a complaint this, last week. And it was a civil issue. We can't get involved in it because the landlord got mad at the tenant and just shut his utilities off.
Because he weren't, he was not paying?
I, I don't know what the circumstances behind it, but I'm like.
Well, the landlord was probably paying the bill at that time, but we couldn't act for the landlord because we were just demanding the landlord pay us. So he was having to pay us, but they weren't paying him. And Chief, Chief's right, that is a civil issue that we.
But it was initially a duplex? I mean, in other words, it wasn't a single-family residence?
This one in particular, I'm not sure. Can you remember?
I mean, you know, I think that is what John is sort of asking and saying too. I mean, I think that's our concern.
Yeah.
If it is, was a single family and turned into a duplex, then, you know, it is going to be an additional cost.
I would say it's in a, you know, our two place, you know, but, but it's, but.
It is. It is going to be a little bit of an additional cost.
A little bit of an additional cost.
In some cases, it could happen right at the wall, the real wall, though.
You're going to have to dig up your front yard. Yeah, I mean, we're passing this in November, we don't have any, you know, just say, you have to have this. If you don't have it, you're illegal.
Well, you've got to.
You know, again, I'm okay with putting in some kind of language that says, and this probably should have come through committee, or did it come through committee or just?
We've talked about it in utility committee more than once, but I decided to go ahead and bring it forth because basically we're seeing more and more applications to turn legitimate single families into multifamilies, which I don't fault those owners. It's a very good market decision because the market, you know, the, the visible hand of the market, this is guiding a lot of people to do this because, of course, our housing demand and the ability to quickly change over to a triplex from a single, you're making, you know, $800 three times a month instead of once. So I understand why it's happening and I'm admiring those, those folks and their.
Well, there is a housing shortage and.
Their fiscal innovation, but, you know, number one, we, we have to take care of the rest of the taxpayers who are fronting the folks who aren't going to pay and we can't do anything about it. We're powerless to. So it's important to get it for new construction, obviously. It's also important to work with our renting, our renter population. Those people are doing us great favor and our community a great favor for providing these occupancies. This is not to make it hard on them, harder than it already is. But it's just to, we'll work with them. We'll find ways of getting it done with them on a timeframe that is comfortable to them.
It could cost, it could cost easily $10,000 or more to do this. If you have to start tearing out walls to reroute your.
No, you wouldn't have to tear out walls. I mean.
I mean, let's say you've got one line coming in the house, well, and it gets, and it just branches out upstairs, downstairs, here and there. You, you won't necess, you're going to, it's going to be major.
Well, I mean.
To dig up the front yard to tap into the line, put in a new meter, it's huge.
Well, you, don't overestimate how much work goes into doing this.
And ultimately, it boils down to the fact that, well, they're only paying one bill. If they, if they paid two bills, you know, I mean, we're, you know, we need to, you know, we have expenses in our water department and all that. I mean, that, there is something to that. What's fair is fair. But maybe there could be, you know, some new kind of billing for these people if that's really what's driving this.
Two things. One, if we don't do this now, we're going to have a tremendous proportion of our rentals that are not this way and they all need to be. Number two, I, I think it's important not to over, not to let the imagination roll and kind of overestimate how much work is really involved in doing this for any particular homeowner, even, especially someone split into triplexes. So what they've done, if they've done that, is they've located the wet walls. Wet walls basically are the walls within a home where you can see your pipes are run. Those are going to be the advantageous locations in the design of the home or in any kind of modification where you run those lines.
I mean, a lot of homes are older and it's just all kind of, you know.
But wet walls.
Water up here and water down here in this part of the house, water up here and water down here in this part of the house, and they just tie it off. You know, it could be really complex.
Yeah, that's exactly my point. There is a lot of complex and a lot of changes and a lot of new wet wall creation or sharing of some wet walls. So there's going to be access to changing the way the water goes all around this, inside of this house. It's already set up that way. It's set up as a tri, when you take a single-family home and turn it into a triplex.
I'm not saying it can't be done. I'm just saying you're going to have to tear up walls, hire plumber, it's huge. This is not a small thing we're asking people to do. So I could support this if we have some kind of grandfather clause for people who already are in this boat. I don't really see that the need to, to, you know, request these property owners to, to spend that kind of money on this topic. I can see from here on forward, if we're going to say, yeah, we want to enforce this, if you want to build an occupancy permit or, you know, once we, whatever we end up going through with building codes, whatever, I'm perfectly fine with that. But I feel like there should be some kind of grandfather clause.
I will say definitively that to do this with a duplex or a triplex, a building that's been altered from single-family status to multifamily status is going to be a heck of a lot cheaper and a heck of a lot easier, coming from a construction background, I think Tony would agree with me, than to do it to a single-family home that has a smaller amount of water, you know, wet walls within that home.
It's already, it's already, if it was built as a duplex.
Lesser amount.
If it was built as a duplex, yeah, that would be, it would be easier, yes.
Even if it wasn't built as one but was transferred into one, there's going to have more, another kitchen here, maybe two more kitchens, maybe two more, maybe four more bathrooms, depending on how many bathrooms per occupancy. So it's going to be easier regardless, even if it's been changed over. And the amount of them that are being changed over right now is a lot more than you've seen in the past. It's about whether you can control your distribution system. I mean, basically, a lot of it's about that.
Really, this just makes sense. If you're going to have multiple dwellings, separate dwellings in one building, they should have separate utilities. Should be an expense that goes with somebody who wants to renovate single-family to more than single-family or to build a duplex. Should be done right. I think it should have been this way all along.
I don't disagree with you. But what about people who've already done it and now they have renters and they're charging whatever per month and suddenly they have to charge $200 more or, you know, whatever, how are they going to pay for that? That's to come out of the rent.
Well, they dodged, they avoided the cost of doing this because it wasn't on, in our laws before, but now if we make it, then it's an expense of doing, of being a property owner that rents out their facility. I mean, that's, you know, if you're a renter, you're in business and it's a business expense.
If you're, if you're a landlord, if you're a renter, suddenly you're paying higher rent because.
A landlord, if you're a property owner who rents your building, that's a business and, I don't know, this is just common sense from my perspective.
We're going to work with everybody, though. I mean, we would work with folks who might have trouble doing it because of the cost or, I mean, you know, we would work with them any way we could. It's not like we're going to push this thing through and you're going to go to jail if you don't pay me by next Wednesday.
We haven't, I mean, a lot of them we don't even know about.
Exactly. We're finding them just as we go along.
I see both sides of the issue because I had a four-plex that converted into a single-family house. But when it was a four-plex, all the water was on one meter, but I paid the entire water bill and it was distributed throughout the tenants that way. So I would have hated to have to put my four different apartments at that time on four different lines when I was paying the meter bill anyway.
So may I ask the city attorney, or is there, I mean, we, we've simplified this and just, you know, cut the thread and is there, is there something that maybe some additional language that we should work on?
Well, I put the language in there so you can make a variance if you want to. And the person that you're talking about that wants to be grandfathered, they better have a pretty good reason why they need to be varied.
Because they don't have $10,000.
All right. So they don't have $10,000.
No, these would cost $10,000.
But are they getting $10,000 worth of benefit by having the place on one meter versus four meters that the tenants are responsible for instead of them? In Tony's situation, if he was supplying all of the water as part of the rent, that's what you're doing, wasn't it?
Yes.
That's an easy out for the landlord. He doesn't have to change a thing. If he gets a variance and, and he says, I'd just as soon pay that as pay $10,000, I'll just pay the water bill. It's the cheapest part of the utility. That's one variance. Or, I was talking with Carl and Carl said, you can have a multifamily dwelling and there's a type of a boot you can put on the individual meeting, meters that separate out the apartment by apartment lines in some multifamily structures so that you got this octopus going out to 10 units and there's a meter for each unit, but it's coming in off of one pipe. If you put the boot on each meter that isn't paying, you still have, you know, maybe you got two with boots not paying, the rest of them are running through like they're supposed to and they're metered per tenant. Maybe that's the solution instead of digging up the yard in some of these dwellings, if it's possible. But if you are all over the place, like you were talking about, John, and it's here and there and it's not capable of being divided into individual apartment-related lines only, I mean, that is a major project. And I guess that's the reason maybe you vary to something where you supply the cheapest part of the utility as part of your rent and just live with it until you're ready to make a change.
So could we put that in the ordinance that said, well, if the landlord's paying the bill, then we don't care? In other words?
Listen, let's, let's bring this down to something digestible.
That's the reason that, that sentence is in there about this may be varied depending on your layout.
Let's bring the.
Who provides, sorry, who provides the variance? Where's, who comes authority?
To come back to the city, when you're talking to us about, we're changing from a single-family to three units, we're getting a building permit to make some structural changes. We've got three apartments out of one large house now. When you're doing that permit, you're also talking about how does the utility work in the house?
Well, I'd rather define the variance in the ordinance rather than just leave it vague so it could be varied. I mean, if we can define the, if we can say, this is way out, okay, if you, unless the landlord is paying the water bill, you have to have separate lines for each occupancy.
But we can't do this, we can't do a piece of ordinance for the city requiring meter on each line and provide framework for outs in the ordinance itself. Let's bring this down to something digestible here. They're not hardly any of the, I can't imagine one of these costing $10,000. We're talking about an individual tab. You don't have multiple tabs.
John, read the ordinance. It says that you can break it up inside the building. Says it right there.
There's only one tab, yeah. And, and this isn't sewer, this is water. This is just a water line. And so you've got one individual tab coming to the building and right where the water is going in the building for the one access, I mean, you might have to go, what's the standard width of a, of a ranch in town, you know, you got 42 feet long or so? You go around this side, trenching a little line to find an area over here in this bathroom to get into that occupancy. There is no way, if anyone bid $10,000 on, on the typical job of the, even 99.9% of them, I'd have to say, where's that $10,000? The tab's already there.
And again, you know, I, I think we're just kind of presenting this to the public here. I have a feeling, you know, at our next meeting, we're going to have some landlords here, really, I hope we do, who are, you know, really thinking about this.
John, I didn't write it so that we would create an outline of alternative types of design for this. I think you're setting yourself up for a real big, long ordinance with a lot of things that people will take shots at. I think you leave it to the discretion of your city administration, the planning office, and what seems reasonable. If you have to get a variance, you go through the steps for that, similar to a real estate lot line variance. Otherwise, I think this is going to get much more complicated than it was ever intended to do. We're just trying to fix things as they're discovered to be illegal or new stuff, so.
Yeah.
We're trying to make them illegal is what we're trying to do. I mean, I, I mean, not, now we're trying.
Once we discover are illegal, trust me.
Once we discover they're illegal, well, here, right now it says you have to have a separate service line to buildings. If we're going to say it's a separate service line to occupancy. Now, I understand the, the idea of that and from here on out, I can see that. But again, we, we're just trying to make sure they're not illegal. Well, we're going to make them illegal and we're going to make sure that they comply. Well, again, it's a huge, it's a huge burden on, on many, many landlords to, to do that.
So John, I guess my question to you is, would you like to table this and have it, have the committee meet again and you talk that over with them one more time? Or you want to go, you know, provide amendments next week at a second reading? You could do that.
I'd like to make a motion to move it from first to second reading tonight, if possible.
Okay, so there's been a motion to move from first to second. Is there a second?
Second.
So moved by Hallie, second by Jessica, Ledger, Kaelin. Okay, so additional discussion.
Could we have Carl chime in on this, our waterworks superintendent? Since he's the full-time water guy.
I think one important thing would just say, what's the cost of a meter? Because we're talking about the cost of a meter, the cost of a cutoff box.
Or examples of, of buildings that you found that had, that would.
Maybe 50 feet, not even 50 feet.
That fall into this. So it says right here, "This requirement may be varied to permit inside-building separation of service lines." So...
The only thing on that problem we have run into is, I don't have a problem with separating it inside the building to make it easier that way, but we need to have access to where that separation and where those meters are at. We have, for instances, where we have three folks, or three parties living in a building, all three meters are in, say, the back apartment. And consequently, the person in the back apartment is the one that's not paying their bill and won't let us in, unless we can't get in. I've had discussions with John about how to fix that. But really hate to take it to that level. I guess, just think, sitting back here, listening and thinking, grandfathering, not correct grandfathering, but if you're to make the exception, I guess one possibility would be, those folks that didn't want to spend the $10,000, they can choose not to do that and go to one meter for that building. And then however the water is metered, however the water is, then that landlord would end up being ultimately responsible for the water for the entire building. And as Tony says, it's included in the rent. So yes, your rent's going to go up whatever, because I'm assuming your water usage now. That may be, instead of going back to the folks that have it in existence now that are illegal, possibly just taking, eliminating the possibility of them splitting it up. Just to touch base on you, one thought, John. The folks that have these duplexes and triplexes, they've changed their single-family dwellings into a multifamily. The meters are already there. The plumbing is already done. So all you have to really do is just run the line up and hook on where the meter are now. So it wouldn't be, you know, redoing all the plumbing inside the house, because somebody's already figured out, "Well, if you're living in these two rooms back here, and these water lines go to you, so I'm going to put a meter here, and you have to pay that bill. You're living in this half of the house, so the lines down here go that way, and there's a meter there." So, you know, as far as turning the walls out, I don't believe that would be quite as dramatic as you may think. The digging in the front yard, if you wanted to run a separate service line to each one of them, yes, that's going to be a little more dramatic and costly. But that's just an option I was thinking of, possibly. You might want to think about, or bring into your discussion, that in lieu of digging up, tearing down walls, whatever, you just have to revert back to a single meter.
But is that all right? I mean, isn't that what these buildings have now?
No.
Don't they already have a single meter?
Well, most every building has one meter.
One service line, multiple meters, that's what we're trying to avoid.
We have folks that have, you know, I bought a, I'll just pretend, I bought a big two-story house here in town somewhere, and I lived there with my family, and I don't use the upstairs. So I'm going to go down to basement, and I'm going to say, "Well, those pipes go upstairs. I'll do a little plumbing, and I'll, then I'll call the city and say, 'Hey, I want to rent this out, and I'm going to put another meter in.'" And that's if I'm nice enough to call the city. But, so anyway, you get the second apartment upstairs, so those folks have a water meter. Now, they're paying their own bill. It all comes in on the same service line. The people upstairs, they're really nice people, but maybe they're a little reluctant to pay the water bill for some reason. "Well, I can't go shut the water off to the house..."
Right.
"...because the people downstairs are very faithful, and pay their water bill in a timely fashion."
I get it. Couldn't we, I mean, if that's really the issue, is that having a separate service line for each meter, couldn't this say here, instead of each occupancy? I mean, do we really, is it really, you know, such a terrible thing that different occupancies share one meter? You already said that's not a problem. John said that might be cause of a...
That's a higher cost.
Hmm?
If you're running a new line to each one of the meters, the main line...
That's a tremendously higher cost.
That's the higher cost, and that, that's the higher cost. The separation of the meters, one line, and then separating the meters properly, that's the lower cost.
Yes, in most of these situations, there's one access line coming to the home, and right at the home, you're going to change it into multiples. And let me just say that when you create a new wet wall, there's not 10 service lines going to, you usually have like one or two service lines going to that, and advantageous point, in case you do have a problem, because you've got a cutoff on it.
But didn't you just say, "The problem that you foresee is when you have more than one meter on a single service line?"
With no access to them, when they can't get to the meters, when it's in the basement or the crawl space of a person that is uncooperative and won't let us in their house, won't answer the door.
So, I mean, is that what we're trying to address by this ordinance here?
Well, no. What, he's just saying that it causes problems because we have to get administrative search warrants if we run into a problem where someone won't give you access to the public good. But the problem we're trying to solve here is going forward with a lack of planning in our utility department. And this is one of the things that we didn't do, we should have done.
I have no problem going forward with good planning. But again, to require, to require for everybody who's already got it.
In the spirit of what he's saying, we could set up a situation where it says, "You have, those of you out there who have these have, from this date, three years or four years to get this changed over. All new construction must do this." And then others have three- to four-year period of time to get it done. You could say that.
I feel a little better about it.
Well, there's also the fact that we have meters out there that are non-functioning, and they won't, we can't get in to change them. They won't let us, and that's just, I've had a conversation in the last couple of weeks with John, and he shared the administrative order with me, and I don't, yes, that's a recourse, but, you know, I don't feel comfortable going up to my neighbor's house and saying, "I've got an administrative order, let me in." You know? Why should it have to come to that? You know?
Your last sentence in your ordinance talks about, if it's appropriate for variance, one of the determinants has to do with access. And that is basically out of Carl's mouth, because I agree with the gentleman here in the front seat that's talking about, the least expensive solution here would be to sort out the service lines separately, meter them rather than digging trenches out in the front yard. But if you have that, but you don't have an access to where you can put your, what do you call it, boot lock on the individual lines inside, it's worthless. And if you have an owner that says, "I'll come, I'll do this inside, it's going to save me a bunch of money, and I'll agree to allow access to the city to the basement to get to where those things can be booted," then we've got a fix that's probably a win-win both for the city, each individual tenant's rights, and the landlord. I don't think you, you can't imagine all the possible variables, so you're going to have a geometric function of this that goes on, you know, to the millions as far as the possible imagined scenarios of the way pipes can be run. But this gives you the discretion right at the start when you're talking about it in the planning office, and Carl can be part of that.
But I mean, I want this to be on the record. If somebody has a contractor that's telling them it's going to cost $10,000 to do this, somebody's got a contractor who's making a whole lot of profit on that job. That's a public, I'm saying that in public right now.
Yeah, it's dangerous to throw out large numbers, and then everyone starts quoting them, and they end up in the paper, and it's based on what? I mean...
That won't be in the ordinance.
So, um, let's take a vote on this, and if I could request, you know, I think it'd be worthwhile, since there's been so much discussion, to have utility committee meet again. John, if you can try to be there and talk through it a little bit more, and if you come up with maybe this compromise of, you've got so long to fix it or something.
Yeah, I'm not hard and fast on the date either. I mean, four years, five years.
Yeah, so let's, let's just have a little more discussion. We've got two more readings after this. And so let's go ahead and call the question, call the roll. Hallie?
Yes.
Ledger-Kalen?